October, I wish, of August 25th. Of August 25th, 2020. So let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mark.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Okay, um, so we can start with open forum. Um, and I don't have anything for open forum. Do other folks from the board have something for open forum? I know you do, Scott.
Yeah, just wanted to congratulate our former colleague, Elizabeth Almeida, for being named a 2020 Massachusetts heroine. It's a celebration given annually to one member of our community by the state who displays strong leadership. And Elizabeth certainly did that as on the Board of Selectmen and Ad Commission and to a number of important committees and also helping to develop women in government. So congratulations, Elizabeth. It's an award well deserved.
Indeed, congratulations. Anybody else from the board have anything for open forum?
Just a, just a short thing, Andrea.
Yeah.
Westford Cat, people may or may not have seen it, but Westford Cat has started producing a short edited version of our meetings. And so if people want to get a quick catch up on what's going on in town government, I think they're like 10 or 12 minutes. So you're going to miss out on a lot. But if you only have 10 or 12 minutes, that's a good way to stay in touch. So take a, take a peek at that if you get a chance.
I think three hours is much better investment of time.
Okay, um, so I know that Emily Teller is out there and she has something that she would like to speak to us during open forums. So Emily.
Am I, I'm muted now?
You are.
Okay, I would like, I am appearing here tonight to say thank you to the six of you, including Jody, for your support of the Forward Into Light project that I initiated and took a million people in town to make happen. The Westford Historical Society and the League of Women Voters both contributed very nicely and some friends of mine did. So it wasn't quite as onerous that I, as I had feared financially, but it was very successful. It started not on Saturday, Sunday night as we thought, but, I mean, Saturday night as we thought. Sunday night was lots of rain and John Hooper came and as you see, lit up a lot of buildings. I hope there are some more images here that I sent to Eric. Because all the buildings on the Common are lit and they look great. Town Hall in particular looks pretty fabulous. And the Paris Center for the Arts, the old fire station. It all worked great, even though the rain held off for the promenade and the rally, which was great. But it rained the whole time and thundered in lightning while John Hooper was installing this. So he had to be very careful. So I just wanted to say thank you so much. The rally and the promenade went perfectly. It was really fun and there are links on Westford Cat and the Eagle has a good article coming out. So thank you. And this particular image here, I would like to ask your permission. We have put them, one on the Common, which I applied for on Boston Road, which is what's allowed. But we have one by the Conley's House and one in front of the library and at the museum. And we would like to put one in front of Town Hall just for the next two days. It would be removed on Friday morning. So if you could give me permission to do that, we would do it. We didn't do it today because we wanted to wait and ask. But as you see, the buildings look pretty cool. And I did send this to the Boston Globe and I sent it to the Women's Suffrage Centennial Commission in Washington DC and also to Freddie Kay, who has, she's the president and CEO of Suffrage 100 MA. So we could be seeing our town in all kinds of places coming up. And I posted it on my Facebook. The League posted it on theirs. So there you go. Thanks, everybody.
Well, thank you, Emily, for spearheading this and getting this all in place and for all your hard work. It's, it's very much appreciated. And the, the Town Center, actually, I went through it last night. And if anybody hasn't, you know, go through it. It looks really cool.
Thanks.
Thanks, Emily.
My pleasure, truly my pleasure. And I will tell you that I think Linda Green is going to post the remarks from the women who spoke on Sunday on the museum's website. So you can get a sense of what everybody said. It was, it was really wonderful and a very memorable event. Andrea, you were there and spoke, so thanks. And same with you, Anita.
As was, I was just going to say, as was Anita. Okay, um, with that, I think that, Jody?
Are you going to give permission for the sign?
Right, um, is there, um, is there a motion to give permission to put the sign that Emily just showed us in front of Town Hall for the next two days?
No worries.
Is there a second? Okay, um, all those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks. Okay, our next item at 7:05 is our continued discussion and actions regarding the new Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. So Tom and/or Anita, do one of you want to update us and let us know where you are and where, what we're looking at tonight? I know that there have been some changes and some revisions to the charge. And I know you worked on some questions and also qualifications. So if you could bring us up to date, that would be great.
You want to take the one, Anita, or should I?
Go ahead, you got it.
Thanks, thanks, everybody, for helping review the document. It got some great input. And so we're bringing back something that we hope has addressed everyone's concerns. And I think, let me just double check the agenda. I think you wanted to go through each of the three separately.
I did. Yeah, let's, let's start with the charge, since that's kind of the overriding.
That makes it, that makes a ton of sense. So Eric, could you bring up the, you could just bring up the document and then we'll highlight the charge. And for those of you seeing it the first time, I'll just read it out loud quick and then we'll have a discussion and take a, make a decision for able on this part. So the proposed charter is the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee will serve as an advisory committee to the town of Westford and whose duty shall be to include advice and recommendations to the Select Board and School Committee. The committee will identify needs around fostering acceptance and valuing diversity and discourage prejudice and discrimination against any person, group, or any other status protected by law on account of race, creed, color, income, religion, national origin, ancestry, gender, sexual orientation, veteran status, age, or disability. The committee will review town and school policies and procedures and make recommendations to ensure they advance equity and diversity where the committee has identified deficiencies. The committee will first report to the Select Board and School Committee on the progress of its work by the end of 2020.
Okay, um, comments from board members? None? Oh, my.
We did such a good job of getting input.
Oh, that's great. Okay, I don't see any questions at this point. So Tom, do you want to go on to the consideration of the makeup of the membership of the committee? Oops, wait a minute, uh huh.
We might have a question.
Nope.
Oh, okay, you're right.
Just to thank you.
So Andrew, do you want to go through all three and vote on them together or piece by piece?
Um, I think, let's go through all three and then we can determine whether or not we vote on it as a package or we take it individually, depending upon what folks' reactions are. So I, I think it makes sense to present everything first.
Okay, let's do it. So the, a bunch of good points last time about how we were going to, what the, the member selection criteria would be. We have a lot of interested people and want to have a fair process. So great points. So here's what we have agreed on at least so far as a draft. So the criteria include extensive exposure and/or experience with at least one of the following. Is it, is a member of a community where issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion exist? Or has been trained in the dynamics of diversity and how organizations have brought effective and positive change? And/or is professionally involved with human resources? These are not meant to be all inclusive, but represent the kinds of exposures being sought. Also, skills beneficial to performing the work of the committee would include demographic analysis, finance and accounting, law, project management, social services and science, survey design and analysis. And again, this is not meant to be comprehensive. It's meant to be sort of examples of things that would be particularly valuable.
Okay, um, any comments from any of the board members on this? Scott?
I don't know if it belongs here or if it belongs in a, a, you know, question to follow up with, but I think it would have somebody on the committee. And I'm not sure what we're viewing in terms of membership, but with some experience in a past town committee, just as aware as to how to do things like meeting minutes, open meeting law, you know, the logistics of, of agendas and working things. So I think someplace we want to, at least ask a question about a prior committee experience, because it might help us to, you know, pick one to people who've got that kind of knowledge.
I think that's a good point. Would you like to add that as a friendly amendment, Scott, to the skills? We could add survey design analysis or we could add an additional sentence again that says prior experience with town committees would be an asset.
Yeah, but not, not for everybody, but for, you know.
Yeah, I, I don't like, honestly, I don't like adding it there. But if you wanted to ask it as part of the follow up questions, you could ask, you know, what if any experience have you had? Or prior experience have you had on town committees? Because I, I don't want to make it an absolute requirement that you have had to have served on a prior town committee before.
Exactly, in fact, we want mostly new people if we can get it, but we want to play the veteran presence to guide it, that's all.
Okay, well, why don't we read through the questions and then answer any questions about that? But maybe we can formulate an additional question that would make sense and make it clear that it's not a requirement for everyone by any means, but it would be helpful if at least one member did. So with that, the questions that, so for those of you new to this, the, on the citizen activity form, it's a great entry point to, to joining any kind of town committee, but doesn't give a lot of opportunity specific to a committee. So we're going to ask, the proposal here is that we would ask follow up questions to all the applicants, all in the same format. And the questions we have so far are, include, please detail your involvement with and exposure to one or several of the diverse communities identified in the charter. Please describe any relevant skills or training you have that will be of service to the work of the committee and that will meet the criteria and skills above. And what are your top two or three concerns in the community related to diversity, equity, inclusion? And what are some initial ways you seek to bring positive change?
Mark?
Yeah, so to Scott's point, Scott, I think, I mean, what you referenced really is involved in that second paragraph there. You know, relevant skills and training. So, you know, if people, someone thought that one of their relevant skills was that they've been a member of a very, some committee or whatever in town, they certainly would fit included there without having to call it out.
True.
Okay. Um, other comments? Okay. And I'm not seeing any comments or questions from our viewing audience. So, um, with that, I think it looks like we have, uh, I think we have a charge, um, a selection criteria and follow up questions. Mark?
Yeah, so I was just going to make a motion to accept as, as shown.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, um, all those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Aye. Well, I would like to say thank you to all of you. I know that, and, and also to the comments that we've received over the past weeks from people who've been watching us. I, I know it's taken us a while to get here and to formulate this, but I think that with the input of everybody and that we really have a, a really good basis to, to start from and to work from. I, I think now for, oh, go ahead, Tom.
I, I may have been getting to the next place you are. I, I think the, we hope to have a, an open period now. Now that people know what the charter is and the questions are, to have more candidates be able to nominate themselves. And so just expectation setting, I, I don't think it'll likely be the next meeting or maybe the meeting after that that we actually see this committee. Because it may just take us a little bit of time to get the word out that we're, we're looking for broad and diverse group and then also give the candidates a chance to respond to these questions. So I don't know if that lines up with what you were saying, Andrea, but just wanted people who are involved to have an idea what's.
It does, and I just, one additional comment I wanted to make, and I guess I would ask town staff to do this, which is that for all of the folks who have already submitted their applications, could we get back to them? Because I'm sure they didn't write down the questions, but could we get back to them with an email listing the three questions that they need to answer in connection with their application? And I'm wondering, um, and, and I guess, Jody, I, I'm asking you or Eric for suggestions. I'm wondering how, in this particular case, because in addition to the citizen's application, they also need to answer questions as if these, the easiest way to do that is once you receive a citizen's application, to then send them the three follow up questions for them to answer? Yeah, go ahead, Jody.
Yes, that's what we'll do, because I don't think we can put all this on the citizen activity form. So we, we will send it to the ones that have already applied and anyone that does subsequently, we will send that and then we will put that in the package for you. And one additional thing, as you're thinking about the appointments is, generally you appoint for three years, but generally we stagger appointments. So not everybody is off at the same time. So just be thinking about that. And we could also, you know, maybe ask that question, how many years of an appointment are you looking for? Because some people might be interested in a one year and others a three year, so we could ask their preference, but.
Okay, Anita?
How does, um, I guess like deadlines and timelines work with people submitting forms? And if we're hoping to appoint within the next couple of meetings, should they send in their forms and everything by a certain date? Should we establish that now?
Um.
Yes, so I'm looking at a calendar, if you.
I was just going to say, I don't have a calendar in front of me. I need some help here.
I do. So if you, if you don't think September 8th is enough time, our meeting after that is September 22nd. And we would want to get these documents back by, say, the 15th. That way, if we had additional questions, we could have a couple of days. So I would say, please get it to us no later than September 15th, but preferably earlier so we could ask the additional questions.
Okay. Scott?
So two things, one is, since this is for town and school, could we ask our school committee, we're super tempted to put this out through their email channels as well to get exposure, which raises the question of, is the appointment being done by the Select Board or by a Select Board and School Committee jointly?
Uh, Tom?
So the, the intent last, when I last communicated, after conferring with Andrea with, um, school committee with Gloria Miller, the school committee chair, her belief was that the school committee was in favor, but obviously they would need to see the charter and take a vote. And so what I can do if it's, if it suits the will of the board is just make sure that Gloria knows that this vote has happened, that we have finalized the language and ask if they can put this on their agenda for their next meeting. And then the intention was if it's a joint appointment, that we would actually, you know, call a joint meeting. And when we have the candidates, you know, have the panel of candidates we want, if that's two meetings from now, we would ask them to join us and they would also make the appointment. That, that is sort of what the, the arc of this has been so far. But we could certainly discuss it.
I, I think, I mean, that, that sounds fine to me. I think, you know, if, if our goal is to, and it is our goal, to appoint on 9/22, then I think we should let the school committee know, you know, if it's going to be a joint appointment, if they want to join us in this, that we're going to have a joint meeting on 9/22. And obviously, you know, we can, we'll schedule it probably as early as possible in the meeting so that, you know, that they're not tied up all evening.
Okay, I'll, I'll communicate with Gloria tonight.
Okay. Um, and then the only other thing, um, actually, which triggered a question is, have, have we decided that the number of members is going to be nine? Or is the number of members something that we want to keep open? Depending upon how many people apply for the committee? Uh, Tom, then Anita, then Mark?
I, I was going to say, I think we could be open to either. So I defer to the, the will of the board.
Anita?
I prefer nine, just because I, I think if we got too big, then it might be really hard to get all the work done. But that's just my first thought, if the group is too big.
Mark?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, you get above nine and it's, you know, something that happens after that. So I think nine is, is sufficient and will require, more than likely, some, some thoughtful and difficult decisions about who's on it. But my hope is that whoever the nine are are going to represent the community, including those who are not, who have not been chosen for, for whatever reason. So we, you know, those, these are going to be all open meetings. People are going to certainly have their opportunity to, to voice their questions and their comments and their concerns. So it's, you know, I think people have plenty, plenty of chance to, to opine.
Uh, Scott?
Yeah, I agree. We found with, um, where they did come into the past, you get problems with the quorum. Unless what we really want to do is have this committee not be functional because of quorum. So keep an eye, as Mark said, anybody can speak. It's open, open meeting and already means that you can't vote if you're out more than nine. And that's, I think, pretty, um, you know, I think, I think the key is to get the communication going. The votes are most are going to be secondary to that communication.
Okay. It sounds like we're in agreement that the committee should be nine members. And then I know Anita and Tom, you initially talked about having a member of the school committee, a member of the Select Board, and I think a town staff member as liaison members, correct? Okay. Yep, Tom?
Just, uh, you probably saw on the questions also, but Gloria is out there listening, so she agreed that they will put this on their next agenda for the next meeting.
I saw that, let me say that, okay. All right, good, terrific, all right. Um, moving on, um, we are at our 7:45 PM item, which is a request for direction on the Carlisle Road Sidewalk Project and an update on the Littleton Road Widening Project. So, um, Paul Starrett, Jody?
Our butters were notified, so I think maybe we should just, this.
I, I was just going to think about that. Can we go to the, um, actually.
If I could, Madam Chair, in our, in our messaging to the butters, we told them that the Select Board, this was not a public hearing. They had the option to take it out of order and to be online at seven. But certainly, if you want to wait, we can do that.
I think I prefer to wait. I know that we had somebody who was traveling home and who was interested in this, in this subject. So in light of the, I mean, if it were five minutes, I would say, fine. But we're 20 minutes unbelievably ahead of schedule. So, um, so I, I think, I would like to skip this. Um, and I guess, um, let's do some things that, you know, don't really involve public, the public comments. So let's go to minutes and let's, we have minutes for approval of June 23rd, 2020, and July 30th, 2020, which is a joint session with the Town and School Safety Task Force, regular session for release. Is there a motion?
Removed.
Removed.
Second. All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Aye. Um, and then we have executive session minutes from July 14th, 2020, a joint session with the Planning Board, not for release. So is there a motion to approve but not release?
Removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Um, okay, hey, Jody, wanted to tell managers' report?
Sure, hold on a minute. Okay, so I'm going to update you briefly on the Recreation Department. Jim Dwayne and I met last week. He has been speaking with Bill Olson. Bill is offering him a couple of classrooms, I think five or six, at Millennium. Jim came up with a schedule to handle the kids either fully remote or the kids hybrid. And he presented it to Bill with me. Bill was going to present it to the principals and see what they felt their needs were. So we weren't ready to bring that to you tonight, but there is a program that he has put together to offer some assistance with people needing childcare after school, during school, before school, all that. So I just wanted you to know, there is a plan. We're waiting to hear back from Bill and then we will bring it forth to all of you to see if you support it. There would be reduced revenues, but, you know, there would be an offering for parents who are looking for some assistance.
Okay, so I assume we'll see it at our next meeting?
Yes, we realize it's time sensitive, but, you know, we're doing the best we can with the information we have. So, but Jim is doing a remarkable job. I told him he didn't have to participate tonight, but he, he and his staff have really come up with some great ideas on how to handle this. So, uh, so then I wanted to announce, I don't know if you remember, but you actually approved the Recycling Commission to apply for a grant to assist with looking at different pay issue throkes scenarios, and they did receive that grant of 80 hours of assistance. So I just want to announce that and they will get working on that right away. Contracts, uh, with much thanks to Eric and Richie from Acme Waste, our wonderful trash hauler, uh, who doesn't seem to want to retire. Thank, thank you, Richie. We just entered a new three year contract with him at the amounts that are listed in your, in your agenda. But for fiscal year '22, $715,520. Fiscal year '23 at $744,141. And fiscal year '24 at $773,907, which is significantly under what we got when we went out to bid. So very good job by, by Eric and thank you, Richie. So I'm asking for your approval of that, along with Jay Tropano for Abbott School Pedestrian Improvement Project, amount of $128,067 and 13 cents. And Heimlich Landscaping to provide renovations for the Rowan McGilligod Playground at Edwards Beach in the amount not to exceed $98,500. Purchase orders Bergeron Protective Clothing LLC for firefighter protective clothing in the amount of $23,000. And Dakin for upgraded air conditioning at Westford Academy Server Room in the amount of $10,468.
Anybody have any questions about any of these? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Removed.
There's a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay. Anybody have any board reports or updates?
About the consent agenda?
I'm getting there. Now I'm working backwards, okay? But you noticed I'm going backwards? And that, so we are, we're at the consent, the consent agenda, and we have a request to approve the following: use of the town common and bandstand for free body weight and mat fitness class. The applicant is Chrisanth Anderson, from September 1st, 2020 to December 1st, 2020, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday mornings from 9:30 AM to 10:30 AM, Tuesdays and Thursdays from 6:00 AM to 7:00 AM, and Sundays from 7:30 AM to 8:30 AM. Then we have, we have a general license for Witches Woods. I, I would actually like to take that out of the consent agenda, because I've got some questions, and I know we've got some comments from both the Board of Health and I think our, our police chief. So I'd like to take that one out of the consent agenda. And also, so that's three as well. So at this point, all we, let, let's just vote on the request to use the common and the, the bandstand for free body weight and mat fitness class. So is there a motion? Mark?
Yeah, so is that, you can add body weight for free? Is that what that's, class is all about? Because-
You're joining?
I don't need to sign up for that, but thank you very much. But I will allow it to happen.
Is that your motion?
Trying to add some levity.
Is that your motion?
That's my, yeah, that's my motion. As long as it's not adding free body weight to people, I, that's my motion to recommend, to approve.
I will second.
All those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I. So, um, let's see if we can talk about Witches Woods. Is Doug DeShane with us at this point? Jody?
I don't think so. This, we had some concerns with Board of Health and the police, so we are continuing this until 9/22.
Your next meeting. Um, that's why I want to talk about this. And if we have to wait for Doug, then we should wait for Doug, because I do have an email from Doug asking us to talk about this tonight. So-
Okay. I did not know that.
Yeah, and I know you didn't. So, so let's take that out. So, I think we can go back to the request for direction on Carlisle Road sidewalk project and update on the Littleton Road widening project, because the individual who was traveling home has let us know that he's, he's home and he's ready to proceed with that. So, hello, Greg. So, Paul, are you out there?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. So Paul Sterrett, Town Engineer. Back in March, you saw our presentation for addressing pedestrian accommodations on Carlisle Road between Littleton Road and Liberty Way. That was a sidewalk that was predominantly on the side of the road, opposite, or on both sides of the road, on Paul's diner side and on the former Walgreens side. An image of it, you see right here in front of you. There was some concerns expressed from Butters, and the, the board asked the engineering department and the pedestrian safety committee to go back to the drawing board with an option. We came up with another option, which included a sidewalk on, let me call it the bottom side of this image here, the side where the former Walgreens or Liberty Way is, all the way up to Applewood. And that design eliminated some of the opposition on the other side of the road, particularly on the Melissa Drive and Paul's diner side of the road. And that, if Eric will scroll down, will be the, the next option there. This is not necessary to look at. This is, just keep going. That's, that's what the sidewalks on both sides would look like, obviously. And this, this option here now shows a sidewalk on the Liberty Way side of the road. And if you scroll down, you'll see it continues to Applewood Drive. It goes by the Mac Industries, which is the parking lot area you can see on the bottom of the screen. This is the option that the pedestrian safety committee, in a memo to you, supported as well. There'll be some challenges, both in design and in construction of this, with the, the trees, the, some slopes, some util, all the utility poles are on this side of the road. Ideally, it would be on the other side of the road, where there aren't any trees and to remove our utility poles to deal with or, or slopes. But this does avoid some of the Butters who are concerned about impacts to their property on this concept here. So in order to advance this design, we would need some direction from the board, as to whether or not you wanted to have the original design. This, thank you, Eric, is a, here is a quick comparison of the, the two options, the original concept, and then the alternative here. But in order to advance this, we would need some authorization to seek some funding and then proceed with the design for this.
Okay. Comments, questions on the board? Mark?
Yeah, so it might be worthwhile, maybe either Jody, or Paul, or Chris is, I think he's, he's on, is where we left this with the Capitol Committee way back, it seems like a million years ago, back for, in the winter. So I don't know if one of you guys can summarize where the Capitol Committee trying to pass-
Yeah, we, we had, the original concept, the sidewalk on both sides, we asked, our initial construction estimate was about $400,000. And that, of course, was paused with our last annual town meeting. We've not since met with Capitol. I don't know if the chair of the pedestrian safety committee, Chris Barrett, wants to add to that, but we will obviously need construction funding. Design funding, of course, came from some of our gift accounts for those apartment buildings that have been built on Route 110 that had given some gift money to the town, so we could help with our 110 and transportation improvements.
Chris, do you want to respond?
Yes, if I may, thank you very much. So as regards to the, the funding, we have brought this project through the capital planning process. The intent with the redesign that you see before you is to try to stay within that budgeted amount, and hence why we're, we're actually stopping it at Applewood Drive instead of continuing it down further down the, down the, down the road. One of the things that we will need to seek funding for is, is the design, additional design funds, which we do have some other methods to pay for that without having to go back to Capitol. But ideally, if we do complete the desire, you know, if you do support the second alternative and we complete the design, the idea is that the, the funding that we've currently come forward with and would hopefully be approved at our next town meeting would be sufficient to complete the construction.
And I could add, Madam Chair, the additional design monies would be about $30,000 to, to complete the survey and design of this extension up to Applewood.
Um, Scott?
Although, I have different topics. If Mark wants to ask a question on Capitol first, he should go.
Okay. Mark?
Yeah, so, right. So the Capitol Committee had, as part of its original 21 recommendation, and Dan and Jody had suggested that the full, so we had, we had recommended $400,000. Jody and Dan had recommended that that would be bonded. So my only question is, is if we were thinking this is going to be 30 above the 400, or do we not know whether the 30 can be absorbed within the 400 that we originally had set aside?
I think the, at least my intent would be that we would ask for use of the pedestrian gift account, that both the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board have authority over for that 30,000.
Okay, so that doesn't have to come in front of us?
We would, we would come back. We would go to the planning board and ask them, they, I mean, they, they, the sidewalk gift account is, is something that the planning board has an option to use if a developer, and we've had some recent projects that waive a sidewalk on both sides of the road, for example, in that, that we have funds available in that account. And we go to the planning board, and then we would come back to you as well.
Jody, and then I have a question to ask Paul about that, but Jody, go ahead.
So it was my plan to come back to you on September 8th and start talking about the special town meeting and whether the board, you know, what, what direction the board wanted to provide us with on all the articles we deferred from the annual town meeting. So that at least would be beginning that conversation. So that was my plan. I know Capitol, Mark is planning to have a Capitol meeting too. And CPC is also meeting on the 15th with a couple of us to discuss the bathrooms at Westford Academy. So there'll be a lot of discussions coming up in September about where, where you want us to go.
Okay. Paul, I have a question for you about the sidewalk gift account. The developer across the street of the 55 Housing Development? The 55 and older, okay. Has that developer contributed to the sidewalk fund?
No, they've actually contributed, are in the process of contributing a sidewalk. They will, they will be making an important link between what we have proposed here in this alternative, number one, to connect to the existing network, or the network that we're going to build.
Okay.
So, so Scott has agreed, and I believe he is online as well, to, to construct that as a part of his project, in front of his project.
Okay, thank you. Scott, I know you had some questions.
Well, there's a lot of questions. Just observation that, you know, the Applewood choice was partly because of, as the funding would probably work in terms of adding up correctly. It also lets us connect potentially with Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. So one of the things Healthy Westford is working on as a committee, and many thanks to Bill Harmon and Don Gila, is how do we connect our sidewalks to our trail system to avoid building sidewalks if we can use trails? And there is a potential to have this linkage from Kyle Road through trails to the rail trail, which would be a really nice way to get down without going through Kyle, without going through the intersection at 225.
Okay, that's great. I, I have a couple of questions, just about the, the design you're showing, Paul. So the design that you're showing has a pedestrian, has an island, a pedestrian island. Eric, can you scroll back to the-
Previous screen there.
Previous screen? So I'm a little concerned about the safety of people standing in that island. And I'm also concerned about if we have that island there, what that does to the flow of traffic.
So the, the island, as you're referring to it, we refer to as a pedestrian refuge, actually is designed to give pedestrians a spot to stop between crossing the one-way, traffic going one way and traffic going the other way. It's, it's not unlike what we have up further on Minot's Corner. And the pedestrian refuge just cuts down the amount of space that someone has to cross the full lanes. And no, our designers have modeled this with the current and projected traffic volumes, so that we, we have queues here now, and we'll continue to have queues. But this is a change from single lane to double lane. So it's actually a good place to put the refuge. It's one of the reasons we did it.
I, I'm confused by your last sentence. Are you saying we're, we're going from single to double, or double to single? I, I don't, I'm, I'm confused.
Right, yes, I'm sorry, yeah. So I, I don't have my, my infamous laser pointer to be, to show you here, but to the right of the screen, you-
But somebody does have their pointer, see?
I know, but, so the, the right, the right side of this image shows that Carlisle Road is predominantly a, a two-lane road, one lane in each direction. At this intersection of Liberty Way, which is a traffic generator, it produces more volume, going left in particular, we go to two lanes. So you can see, after Melissa, it is a, a two-lane road, and both, to the right, the other side of Melissa, it's a one lane. There's a little turning pocket there, but after, after that, it goes from a one lane to two lanes. So our, our designers modeled that to, to make sure that we weren't going to have traffic queues.
Okay. And then my, my final, my last question for tonight is, Eric, if you move the screen, well, maybe you don't have to, but, you know, the, the shopping center where Paul's Diner is, okay, and Printing Solutions and a nail salon and several other places, are people going to be able to, if there's, if they're at the intersection of, you know, Littleton Road and Carlisle, can they cross the street there and get to that, get to that shopping plaza? I mean, can we get people safely to that shopping plaza?
So, and, and Eric has brought back the original concept, which shows two sidewalks on each side of the road. Originally, when the pedestrian safety committee was looking at this particular segment of road, it was because of our observations that there were not a small number of people coming out of the businesses on Liberty Way and walking up to Paul's Diner and to other destinations along 110. And, and so the, the thought was cross them at Liberty or at Melissa, and then they could reach those destinations. With the alternative that we've given to you, that you've asked for, pedestrians will still be able to walk up to the traffic lights at Littleton Road, cross with a pedestrian-activated signal, and then walk back to Paul's Diner. So we are giving you a safe pedestrian route from Liberty Way to those destinations, Paul's Diner in particular. It, it's not the most direct route, but it is a route that is accessible and safe.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so, Anita?
Is there a pedestrian-activated mechanism at the pedestrian refuge? I'm trying to use the right words, because I don't know these terms.
Right.
That's good, that's good. Yeah. Is there a pedestrian-activated light thing, basically, at that crosswalk?
No, that would, it would not be warranted at that refuge. You would, you would just, pedestrians in a crosswalk in, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts are protected. People are supposed to yield and stop for pedestrians. There'll be signs, and it'll be obvious that that's a, that'll be a crosswalk. But there, there was, there was no warrant for putting in a rapid flashing beacon or some other type of hawk system or, or other signal.
Okay. Um, we do have a question. Oh, we have actually several. So let me, let me go through what we've got from the audience. So will the, the donated sidewalk, and I assume that the questionnaire means the sidewalk being provided by the developer, be up to mass DOT town standards? Will the curbing be made of asphalt or granite? I worry about crumbling materials.
Certainly. Yeah, asphalt is the design material that we're using. And the, the, what was the other part of the question, Andrea? And the, the, what was the other part of the question, Andrea?
Uh, hang on a minute, I have to go back. Will it be up to mass DOT town standards?
Right. Yes, it, it will satisfy the Architectural Access Board and the American with Disabilities for accessibility. That's the way it's been designed and it, and will be built that way.
Okay, and will bike lanes be painted on both sides of the improved Carlisle, quote, improved Carlisle Road?
We'll not be providing bicycle accommodations on this particular stretch of Carlisle Road, no.
Okay. Okay, hang on a minute. We just, we have a comment that says the pedestrian crossing an island is extremely beneficial as it helps to slow down the traffic there. And there's a comment from a Melissa Road resident who says he's done that walk, and I believe he's talking about the walk you described, Paul, from Liberty Way down on that sidewalk crossing the street at, you know, the Littleton Road, Carlisle Road intersection, and says he's content with the single sidewalk and that works. And we have another comment that basically reiterates that. Will there be granite curbing?
Yes, we, we don't have the space here to put a grass strip sufficient to protect pedestrians. So we will have vertical granite curbing wherever we build a sidewalk adjacent to a road.
Okay. Those are all the questions, I believe, and comments that I'm seeing. So, so Paul, what do you need from us tonight?
Well, we, we would appreciate some direction on whether or not you would like us to proceed with the original concept you see before you now, which is a sidewalk on both sides of the road. Or if you would like to do a single sidewalk on the former Walgreens or the Liberty Wayside all the way up to Applewood. That, those, that's, that's a design option we have, and then we'll go and look for that sidewalk gift account funding to get the additional survey and design work done from the planning board and come back to you again.
Okay. Chris?
Yes, just to refresh your memory, one of the reasons why we, we were asked to look at a second alternative was that the first alternative, the sidewalk on the top part of this diagram would require a permanent easement and residents were disinclined to provide that easement, which would have made it very, very difficult, if not impossible, to do this without legal involvement. So just wanted to remind the, the, the select board of that.
There was one other comment, and I, I, you know, as we go forward and since the utility poles, if we, if we do go, do, if we go the route of the single sidewalk and having to then move all of the utility poles, there was a comment, would this be an opportunity to look at burying the wires underground?
The single most common question we have every time we talk about sidewalks, first asked by Bob Jeffries when we did Minot's Corner and found out that it would cost $5 million to do. We, we pay, I, I, I don't want to misquote number, but it's very expensive. It would, it would more than double the cost of the project if we were to consider burying the utilities.
National Grid still won't do it for us, huh?
No, they are, they are a guest in your right of way and, and the agreement with them was utility poles. If you want to change that, they will gladly prepare you an estimate of the cost, but it is significant.
Okay, thank you. All right. What's the pleasure of the, of the board? I, I think we're all leaning towards the alternative design as opposed to the one that was originally proposed. Tom?
Just appreciation for the hard work of the pedestrian safety committee and Paul, as always, for your hard work. So I think if we're ready, I could make the motion or try to make the motion. And I, Paul, what you're looking for is support or authorization to continue with the next planning phase for the, for the single sidewalk option.
Correct. And then we will get some funding.
Okay.
I'll talk about that motion.
Okay. All right. All those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes, and I would also just like to thank, at several of our capital committee meetings, we had lots of, when we could conduct them in person, we had several abutters who would, who showed up and shared their concerns with us about the, the double side sidewalk and the concerns they had about the budding into their property. And we certainly listened to that. So I fully support the, the single side.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. All right. You said, Paul?
Thank you. And as with all our projects, we'll continue to work with the abutters right to the very end. And if Eric would accommodate us, the second update is very brief, and this is just, this is a peek into the future. This will be the last of this major infrastructure improvements that we, we are planning to make on Route 110. It is a project that will allow for a two-way, a one-way, two-left turn lane in the center of Route 110 between the Westridge Regency and Powers Road. This will greatly improve the flow and the safety of commuters on Route 110, Littleton Road, especially those driveways, and you'll notice them the next time you're on Littleton Road, where you have to turn left and those people behind the left turner impatiently try to drive around them and eat up the side of the road and the shoulder of the road. Eventually, they're mufflers and bumpers because the road has become that corrupt. This will address that. It will improve the, the flow of traffic. And we also are proposing sidewalk or pedestrian and bicycle accommodations by use of a, a shared use path. It'll be on the, the bamboo side of the road. I think people know that reference well enough, or the Powers Road side of the road. That's a 10-foot wide path that allows both pedestrians and bicycles at the same time, as well as a sidewalk on the Westridge Regency side of the road, all the way up to Powers Road. This will be a significant improvement to pedestrian traffic back and forth, up and down our car. It will also connect all the pedestrian work that we have done on the Bockhonder and all the way to the 99. Eventually someday, maybe even out to Kimball's, but, and then in the other direction, all the way out to Tadmuck Road. And when we complete the Boston Road project, you will be able to walk from Bockhonder all the way to Town Hall and on a pedestrian accessible path, which is, so this is a 2025, 2026 project. We are, you've authorized us to advance this to the 25% design stage. We've had a, a meeting with the abutters already. We've gotten their initial feedback. Very constructive, very helpful information we've gotten from abutters on this side of the project. And then we're going to leave 110 alone. For a while. At least this town engineer is going to.
Anita?
Is there a change on, for speed limits when you widen the road?
No, actually, this, this is a regulated speed, Anita, which means mass, this is one of only three roads, three, well, three and a half roads in Westridge that have a regulated speed. And that's set by mass DOT. Route 110, Littleton Road is a mass DOT owned and maintained road. So they set the speed limit.
Okay, thanks. Um, we, we have a, we do have a comment. Again, I'd like to ask or request that bike lanes be painted in this section. Thank you.
So we won't have bike lanes like we recently added at Tadmuck or at Oak Hill Road. These, these bike lanes will be a shared use path, which is now a, a requirement of mass DOT. They prefer to have, instead of vehicles competing with bicycles in a painted lane, they'd like to see them off to the side on the shared use path.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Paul, this was just an update. You don't need anything from us.
Yeah, this is, this is a peek into the future, but this is, you know, something that we wanted you to be aware of is we advanced to the 25% design stage and we'll be back again with updates. We'll have public hearings. We'll, we'll, we'll be doing a lot more with this over the next five years.
Great. Thank you. And I think it's really exciting that we're going to have a sidewalk, basically, running all the way from Tadmuck now down to Bockhonder. So, and then up into the center of town when all is done. And, you know, it's been a many, many year project, but.
If you want to be one of the cool kids in Westridge, you better learn to walk on sidewalks or use sidewalks. They're all accessible.
Mark?
Yeah, Paul, just remind people who's responsible for clearing the sidewalks during the snow.
So mass, yeah, mass DOT owns and operates this stretch of, of Route 110. They do not clear sidewalks. However, our experience, for example, with Connorstone and Western Valley Marketplace, Whole Foods, they clear it. They, they know that people are using it. So as a part of their snow and ice operations, they tend to clear it, but their mass DOT does not at this time.
Right. So I would just remind people who are in love with sidewalks and they are necessary and important, they're only as good in the winter as those people who are responsible enough to clear them. The town does not do that.
Okay. All right. With that, thank you very much, Paul. Appreciate it.
Thank you all. We'll be back.
All right. Okay, we're at our, I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, he's, he's cheering on my hockey team. So we'll, we'll see how that goes. I'm recording it. Don't tell me the score.
Okay.
Oh, you don't know? Okay.
All right. We're at our 18, 8:10 PM item, which is, as it appears on our agenda, it says it's a request from climate, the Westford Climate Action for Select Board to sponsor their non-binding climate action resolution on the warrant at our upcoming special town meeting. So let me, yes, Jody?
You're missing the flag policy and we have Greg waiting and.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, you are right. I skipped that. I apologize. So climate action people, hang on. So yeah, we, we have a request to approve the amended town common and banned stand usage, usage policy and a new flag display policy. Hi, Greg. And if everybody remembers, we, we talked about this and discussed this at our last meeting. We had some amendments and modifications that we made to the policy for it to be brought back to us tonight. So we have it in our, our materials, in our packet of materials. We also received some comments from John Cunningham about the policy. Greg, did you see those? Yeah, unmute yourself.
Yes, I did see those comments.
Okay. Um, so, um, are those, um, I guess the first question for, for the board, well, there we are, for the board is, are we, are we comfortable with this policy as written? Are there further amendments or suggestions we want to make? And then the second sort of question is, are any of the suggestions that John has put forth, do they need to be included in this policy? Are they, or are they really already incorporated in, in the language? So let's, let's take the first question first, which is where the board stands and whether if there are further modifications or suggestions that we want to make. Okay. Oops. And.
Anita's kind of hand up, Andrea. I just, yeah, hi. I'm sorry. I, I lost, I lost everybody for a minute. I just have a question and I was, I don't know if I'm confusing the flag pole one with this one, but there's one about, something about 48 hours, supplying 48 hours. If you scroll down a little bit, Eric, is that a normal timeline for? So you keep going down.
Was it 18, Anita, where it said the town will not be responsible for flags that are not retrieved within 48 hours? Is that what you're referring to?
No, I think you just, oops, we just went too fast. Let me see if I, my thing. Page two, under the general guidelines. So if stuff is, is, um, number two banners, flags and signs associated with the event may be placed on the common note earlier than 48 hours. I just, I just wondered if that was a correct, normal timeframe. And then where would it be? I don't know if this is like too in the weeds, but. Yeah, right there. Maybe that's okay. I don't know.
You know, in terms of, is, is, since we've never had this policy before, I don't think there's any, you know, any precedent that, that we have followed in, in, in the past is because we've, we've never had this before. And when it comes to, for example, you know, banners or sandwich boards, the timing is really different for each depending upon, you know, what you're, what you're looking for and what you're asking for. And so I think it really, this is for this particular event, I need to, you know, fly a flag. Jody?
I mean, that would be completely up to the board. I think that was just a suggestion. So if you feel that's too much time or too little time, that's, it's just a suggestion.
Greg's got his hand up.
Go ahead. Yeah, Greg.
Okay, thank you, Arthur, your man in chair. Yeah, so this is with respect to the, the town common use policy. And the, the particular provision we're looking at relates to placing banners and flags and signs associated with a specific event. And Jody is correct that, you know, this was just a suggestion that you can put your sign up two days before your event and you need to remove it once the event is over, you know, with the idea that you may not want to have signs cluttering up the common for a long period of time before an event is going to occur, particularly if there might be other events happening prior to that. So, you know, this is a suggestion, but certainly if you feel like more time in advance of the event is suitable for having signs placed, then that's really up to your discretion to decide.
Or less. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I said or less. I mean, it's really up to the board.
I'm perfectly comfortable with 48 hours, no earlier than 48 hours.
I didn't have like a particular, I was just curious if that was a regular, like a typical timeframe, that's all.
Okay. And then as to John Cunningham's comments, Greg, I guess, is there anything in, in John's comments that we need or we should think about adding to this, to the flag policy? Or, or is our, has our policy covered what the, the questions that he has raised?
Well, so the, and the intent of the flag policy is to create, you know, some, some guidance for the board as to, you know, whether and to what extent it flies flags other than the American flag. And the way that I read Mr. Cunningham's email, it appears that, that he objects to having any flags but the American flag flown on permanent flag poles outside of, of town buildings. having any flags but the American flag flown on permanent flag poles outside of, of town buildings. And so, I mean, none of this really fits within the policy because the whole point of the policy is, is to develop guidelines specifically for flying other flags. You know, whether the, the board ever chooses to do that is still a matter of its discretion and it certainly retains the discretion to say that, no, we're never going to fly anything other than the American flag. But, you know, you'll recall that the whole reason that this came up was that you received a request to, to fly the flag of the country of India. And, you know, you didn't really have a mechanism for doing that. And so this gives you that mechanism, but it doesn't compel you to do anything.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? And I don't see any questions or comments online. So Anita?
Sorry, I'm stuck on this 48 hours again. So if we're looking at the flag, so if we used that example and there was a temporary flag pole and the temporary flag pole is erected along with the flag 48 hours prior to the actual event, that would still fall within. Is that okay for this policy? Is that what, would they have been able to do that?
Yes, right. So there, there, there are two different things going on here that are somewhat interrelated. On the one hand, you have the, the town common policy. And so if you have an event at the common and you want to put up a temporary flag pole, you can do that and you can display your message on that temporary flag pole for 48 hours prior to your event, during the entirety of your event, and then you have to take it down when your event is over. What the flag policy addresses is, it really addresses, I think, a situation that you don't yet have, which is if you install a permanent flag pole, say in front of the town hall, then under the flag policy, you would have the ability to decide what flags go on that flag pole, whether they are associated with an event or not.
Okay, thank you. John Cunningham, Eric, can you unmute John who would like to speak?
Yes.
So, so John?
He's self muted now.
John, you need to unmute yourself.
Okay, I think I made it.
You did.
Okay, we don't have to read the policy that you've got is I concur with the policy on the town common in the sense that it does allow them to use, bring their own flag pole or something lesser than that. But the way I read this policy is it opens a can of worms. It says that you could come up with a flag, yes, if the board of selectmen's discretion. But I don't think based on the flag etiquette that it would allow you to put any other flag on a town, on a flag pole that's used to display the American flag. Specifically, you talk about, and I mentioned that, in honor to or in place of the flag of the United States. And that's what you're essentially doing. If you fly another flag that says anything or it's from any other country, if you put it on a flag pole that's dedicated to the American flag. And that's the reason we put these flag poles up in the front of the schools. I mean, we've got 18 or 20 of these poles throughout town. Some of them are before, in front of administration buildings and some of them are probably in violation of policy now. But the thing is, it doesn't allow you to, to fly another flag in place of the American flag. And I object to that. I don't, I, I don't understand. It's given the select board the prerogative to do this. I don't think it's anything that should be entertained. If somebody wants to bring their own standard, wants to carry the flag in a parade or do anything else, another flag, that's fine. And what they did with the flag of India was fine. And then I also had another issue there when you talk about ceremonies. I think there ought to be a provision. This is in, I don't think, first of all, we should entertain it on flag poles that are dedicated to the American flag in front of schools or town property, on any town property. But when you talk about ceremonies, I think you should consider that if they're having a ceremony that involves the American flag, then somebody should look at that ceremony and make sure that it's handled appropriately. So I have a couple of concerns there, but the main one is after reading it, first I thought this was, was really good. And that you had a lot of good reasons and a lot of things, you have the discretion. You wouldn't be putting up political signs and that list is pretty good. But just the way, I just don't think it's appropriate to display any other flag on a permanent flag pole for Westwood.
Okay. So first of all, Eric, this is the town common policy that you have up. So can you put the flag policy up? Thanks. Great, thank you. Scott, did you have your hand up?
Oh yeah, I mean, the intent was had been that there'll be a, at some point, not one flag pole, but two flag poles, put up either library town, however that was. So it was the intent that we would strike American colors for some of the country. It would be you flying a second country's flag on a second flag pole at the same height as the US flag. That was always the intent. That's not what's being said in our policy. That's a mistake.
Yeah, I think paragraph, when we speak again, I think paragraph four pretty much sums it up. And, and I think like Scott said, if you have a second flag pole, as long as you honor that policy, you could, you could raise another flag of a friendly country adjacent to that. And then if you're going to do that, then if you had a second flag pole, that'd be fine. But there's only, I think, one administrative building that has that and that's the highway department. And they fly the state flag plus some other flag. I don't understand. You know, next to the American flag, but it's at the right, it's the right place, at the right height and whatnot. So that would be my concern. So paragraph four, I think, is, is, is good. It's paragraph five I have a problem with.
So, okay, I was just going to say you agree with paragraph four, right, John?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and that's the reason I said paragraph five shouldn't even be there because it says and, and that, and no flag should be flown equal above or in a position of superior promise in honor or honor to or in place of the flag of the United States. And if we put one of it, one of the schools, that's in place of the American flag. And that's, I think that holds true for the other permanent flag poles that we have.
But we just said in four, we're not putting something in place of the American.
That's right. You, you shouldn't allow that. And then, essentially that's what you, well, if you allow, say you make a request. I also asked the question of what kind of a sign, of flags would you be entertaining? I mean, that's open. But say down the road, somebody comes up with a flag and they want to put it up. And you put it up in one of the permanent flag poles that's normally used for American flag. You are in a sense replacing the flag of the United States.
Okay, so I guess.
It's the image of it. And to me, that strikes. I, I, when I think about that, it bothers me.
I, I hear what, I, I hear that it bothers you and I hear what you're saying. I guess my confusion with you is that it specifically says in four or in place of the flag of the United States.
That's correct.
So we aren't going to fly a flag of another nation in place of the flag of the United States.
Well, if you put a flag of another nation on one of our existing permanent flag poles, that's in, that's in essence is what you are doing. Now, if you put it adjacent to it like they do, like it suggests, if you have it a flag pole adjacent to the American flag pole and it's its same height and same size, that's fine. I don't have any objection to that. You could do that at the water department. I mean, at the highway department right now because it has two flag poles there. I would have no problem with that. The problem I would have is if you took one down, say in front of town hall and replaced it with a flag of another friendly country, I would have a problem with that. I just don't agree with it as being a good policy.
John, I don't think anybody is saying that we're going to be doing that. And I don't think that this policy says that we're going to be doing that.
Well, I think it opens the gate for it. I mean, you look at this policy and there's nothing that prevents you from doing that.
Except that in four.
Okay, you can't, if you, if you understand that, then fine.
One thing you could do is on, on article five, where to say with locations with two or more permanent flag poles. I mean, it says flag poles plural, but I guess one could say, well, multiple locations with poles could be one provocation. But to drop point, if you make it, we only take requests for a case, there were two permanent flag poles. By definition, the American flag stands, the other flag gets to it. That's, that's what it was intended to be, I think, two or more, to say two or more.
But, but I guess my issue with that is exactly what happened recently with the flags of India is the pose were at the town common and, and, you know, there isn't, we, we don't put in a permanent town, a, a permanent flag pole there, but a group wants to raise their flag that day and they, they bring their temporary flag poles. Are we now saying that they can't do that because there are two or?
No, that's, that's the one where I say, you know, I'm, I'm putting, I'm discussing in regards to our permanent town pole.
Right, I know you are. I, I know, John, I know you are. I'm talking about what Scott just proposed.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. What if we just deleted five completely?
Yes, I was gonna say, I don't, I don't have purpose, five even so.
Greg, Greg, let me ask you, what if we deleted paragraph five completely?
Well, I mean, the, the intent of, of paragraph five, I think, is, is different than, than the way that it's, it's being interpreted. And I, I wrote paragraph five with the intent of saying that, that the town is not going to accept requests to install new flag poles, that, that this policy only applies to flag poles that are, that are in existence. You know, I understand the, the conflict that's being pointed out now, but that's not what, what this was intended to get at. It, it was intended to get at something completely different where someone comes in and says, I'd like you to put a second flag pole in front of town hall. And you have a policy that says I can do that. And paragraph five would say, no, we don't. Nothing in here requires us to consider a request to put up a second flag pole. I think that, that Scott's suggestion to add to that only for locations with two or more permanent flag poles probably resolves the, the problem. And with respect to temporary flags on the common, that's addressed in paragraph two, which says that the board reserves the right to allow other flags to be flown on temporary flag poles erected on the common. So you know, I think that, that Scott's suggested addition to paragraph five retains the, the protection I was concerned about and then also resolves this issue of conflict by saying that you're not going to fly it on, on a flag that is customarily for the American flag.
Andrea, may I say something else?
Not yet. Because I want to respond to Greg, but I will let you speak, John, okay?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm being over.
But Greg, if, if I go back to what you just said, paragraph four takes care of that we are not flying any other country's flag in place of the flag of the United States. If your intent in paragraph five was to ensure that this policy does not establish a policy with respect to the installation of new flag poles, why can't we just say that in a simple sentence? You know, in paragraph five, this policy does not establish a policy with respect to the installation of new flag poles. That takes care of this concern you just said that you were trying to address in that paragraph. We've left paragraph four that says another country's flag will not be, will not be flown in place of the flag of the United States. And haven't we addressed both of those issues?
May I suggest one thing, Andrea?
Yes.
Change the language. Instead of the town will accept, that's the obligation we would have based on that. You're saying the town is committed to accept requests only for the location. You could just say this policy applies only to locations with permanent flag poles. This policy applies to only locations with permanent flag poles installed, and that would solve the whole problem. Instead of the town will accept, which obligates us to accept requests, say this policy applies only to locations with permanent flag poles installed by the town. Then I'd be happy with that.
Greg? What, I guess, both my suggestion and John's, I mean, do you have any comment?
I mean, I, I think either way is, is fine. It, I don't think either of those suggestions is changing the, the effect or the intent of that paragraph.
Tom?
I, I would deal with Andrea's because I think it sounds like if we don't have a flag policy, if someone were to request a flag, temporary flag pole event, but it's not currently a permanent flag pole, it seems like it would negate the whole policy in that circumstance, which I don't think we mean to do. So I, I would suggest we use Andrea's. And I think with, with respect to John's position, I, I think what John's worried about, we'd all be worried about, but it's very clearly called out in number four. So I guess I, I would push to move to, to a motion here based on Andrea's edit.
Okay.
Andrea, could you just give me that again so I make sure I have it right?
I said that we would change five to say that this policy, that nothing in this policy, basically, Jody, start with in the second line down where it says nothing in this policy. Do you see where I am? Okay, so delete everything up until that and just start with, nothing in this policy shall be deemed to establish a policy with respect to the installation of new flag poles. Is there, is there a motion?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
There a second?
Second.
John, I hear you groaning in the background.
I'm sorry, I thought, I didn't know my mic was still on. Okay, I just, okay, that's fine.
All right. Okay. All right. All those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
I'm abstaining.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that, that was the flag display policy. We need to go back to the town common and ban stand policies.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comments or questions? All right. Seeing none. Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. Greg, thank you very much for joining us again. Appreciate all your work on this.
Not a problem. Have a good night, everyone.
You too. Okay, now, now we're at our 8:10 item. With respect to the request from the Westford Climate Action. So I, I want to just first clarify and then I'll, I'll let the proponents speak. They, and it's my fault because it was my wording, they're not asking us to actually, at this point in time, you know, in any way sponsor this resolution or at this point in time even indicating whether we are in favor of it or not in favor of it. All they're asking for right now is if we will agree to have the resolution appear on the warrant, just like we get asked at times to have, from people to put particular articles on the warrant. So, that's, that's actually what the request is tonight. So, I guess, I'm not sure who's speaking to this, if it's Beth or Lynn or Carol, but.
Well, I'm ready to start, but I see Mark has his hand up.
Mark, do you have your hand up? Or you, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were scratching your head.
Yeah, I scratch my head a lot. So, I'm just wondering why we're having, if, if that's what's happening, why are we having a discussion about this now? If we're just being asked to whether we, this is going to go on the warrant, then, I mean, what would be, why would we say no? We're gonna have discussion about this later on, and if we're not gonna have a discussion about it now, why go through the effort?
Well, so here's why, because, it's somewhat unusual when, that we have been asked to actually put a resolution on the warrant. Usually resolutions come up at, on the floor of town meeting. But we were asked to put this on our warrant so that we can give notice to the public that this is going to come up as a resolution on the floor of town meeting. If everybody is in favor of that and nobody has any problems with putting it on the warrant, then you're right, Mark. It's gonna be a very brief discussion tonight and we'll come back to it when we start to do our warrant review.
Yeah, I mean, I got a million and one questions, but this isn't the night for it, obviously. So, if we're just asking to put it on, I don't have an issue with putting it on, and I look forward to the discussion.
Okay, Beth, I know you're out there.
Looks like Jody's trying to.
Jody?
Make a comment.
Well, I just want to clarify, so the warrant is the selectman's warrant. And so we were asked to put a resolution on it. So either the selectman or another town department or whatever sponsors it. But these, if these are citizens, then technically they're supposed to get a citizen petition and a hundred signatures to put this on the warrant. So I think that's why they're asking you, because if you're not going to, quote, sponsor it, like, I think you gotta be a little careful of how you put this on the warrant without a citizen petition. Does that make sense?
Mark?
Yeah, so, I'm certainly not gonna sponsor it, I'm not gonna vote to sponsor this. So, if the right course of action is to have, this, a citizen's petition, then why don't we just do that? That's, if that's the normal course. Unless everybody else wants to sponsor it, and that's fine too, but.
Okay.
I don't know why this is getting special attention, to be honest.
Well, I tried to explain that, but I, maybe I didn't do it very well. But this is an outside group that wants to put a resolution on the warrant. So either the selectman can sponsor it, or if you're not interested, then you ask them to do a citizen petition. Because it's a special town meeting, that's a hundred signatures. So I think that's why they're asking you. We don't just let, you know, nonprofits stick items on the warrant.
Right, so Andrea, if I, if I can, so if, if I'm being asked to sponsor something, that means that we, I would like a, a series of discussions about the, the request. And I'm sure that they don't have all the answers because we haven't been asked to provide questions to them or have them prepare answers to questions. So, you know, that's how I think of sponsorship. Sponsorship to me means an endorsement. I'm not ready to endorse something like this without having a full discussion about a series of questions that I and others have. So, that's just my, my viewpoint. That's why I'm asking the question about why this is, never seen this before.
Okay. Okay, any, any, before I, I'll let, have Beth Peterson speak. Tom?
I, I guess just to clarify, so, so in the lexicon of this, if we sponsor it, it could mean one of two things. It could mean that we think this is an important thing for the town to consider at town meeting, without us endorsing it exactly. Or it could mean that we're actually endorsing it by putting it on. So maybe that's a question for you, Andrea or Jody, but if, if we sponsor it, does that necessarily imply an endorsement? If we're voting to sponsor to put it on, does that mean we're all voting in favor of this resolution like we would in town meeting tonight?
So I would want to double check with counsel, and I'm sorry, I have a moth stuck in a spider web above me. I'm gonna sign off and get this in a minute, but, I believe that you could sponsor it, allow it to be on there, but not necessarily support it, and I can double check that. But it is, it's kind of an unusual situation, so. But I'm happy to check on that. I think the proponents just want to know, because if they can't, they need to get out and get signatures before you close the warrant on September eighth.
Right, I mean, that's, that's part of the other, you know, I, I guess I.
Greg, right now, yeah.
I make the distinction, you know, that, that you make, Tom, simply, you know, I'm allowing it to be on the warrant, okay, as opposed to, you know, endorsing it at this point in time. You know, it's, it's, for me, it's a two-step process that I will permit it to be on the warrant, but I'm not at this point in time saying whether or not I endorse it or not. But we can wait for, to see if Greg can answer that.
I'll call Greg right now, if you give me a second.
Could I speak? Could I speak? Hello?
Hello?
Your questions? First of all.
Well, wait, first of all, hang on a minute, and yes, you can speak, okay? But just let, you know, let me make sure that there's nobody else from the board who wants to speak. And then, and then you just need to tell us, tell the audience who you are. So, Scott?
So I guess, you know, two things, this is not news to the proponents. You know, first of all, I'm concerned with sort of my sense of fairness that we expect the gentleman who wants to rename Columbus State to get signatures. You know, the world flag, we had to get signatures for that person. So other petitioners have had to get signatures, we're, we're saying somehow this is different. Now, I understand we've got COVID out there now, and that getting a hundred signatures is tougher today than it was six months ago. If you want to make, you know, the argument that we serve the public good by avoiding that, you know, petition, I'll, I'll listen to that, but it seems to me just kind of unfair to say, we as a board think this is so important that we'll ignore the problem to go through. And that's not, that's not matter of, I agree or not, it's a matter of, of fairness. And then, you know, second, I don't quite understand why we would sponsor this only because what it does is directs the board of selectmen to charge a committee to look at energy self-sufficiency. And why would we go to town meeting to ask them to direct us to form a committee, just form the committee? So it seems like by our sponsoring it, we're kind of saying to town, please, let's do our job. I, I don't get the rationale that in fact we become sponsors.
Okay. Anybody else in the board have any comments before I, I open up to the public and to people out in the audience? Seeing none. Okay.
Could we speak? Could Beth and I speak?
Yes, now you can, absolutely. Just tell us who you are, okay? So the rest of, so people who do, who, who can't, who don't know you and can't see you, know who, who's speaking.
Yes, this is Carol Morse. I'm co-chair of Westford Climate Action. And we did not choose the word endorse or sponsor. It was to be that the selectmen would allow it to be put on the town warrant. And the reason being is that we thought that this was important for the town to discuss at town meeting. In fact, at an earlier select board meeting having to do with energy aggregation, which we assisted the energy committee in achieving, we were told that decisions get made at town meeting. And so this is what we are attempting to do. And, and Scott is absolutely right and is in line with our thinking about collecting a hundred signatures during COVID. You, you can't get, I mean, I, I don't want to impose myself within six feet of another person to get a signature. So, you know, I just wanted to clarify those points. That language was not our, our choice. And I did write, I did write to the select board and I wrote to Jody about, about that. I said it was a misleading term when I saw it on the agenda.
Thank you. Beth, did you want to add anything?
Well, I, I would really, just like to reiterate that the re, the only reason we're going in this direction is because of COVID. I am very confident, aside from COVID, that we could easily get 100 signatures and it wouldn't be an issue. I am confident that even with COVID, we can go out and do that. It is, there are considerations. For instance, we're not going to stand in front of a market basket. I can't go into my church service and ask people for signatures. We will have to sterilize, you know, sterilize pens and go through all of those procedures. We were initially, it was explained to us that there were two alternatives to getting something on the warrant. One was through the select board and the other was the signatures. And again, very confident that we have the support of many people in town on this and that we can go ahead and do that. It's only COVID that has us here tonight. And, and I think you're all aware of the changes we have made in town because of COVID, to encourage voting, get people to vote by mail or vote at town hall early. You know, a lot of considerations are being made because of COVID. And we can't get electronic signatures, you know. Many changes have been made to town policy and voting based on the pandemic. And one of them is we are doing things electronically that we used to do in person. And, but in this case, I don't believe there's any way to get electronic signatures for, for getting a citizen's petition on the town warrant. So, if there is a way of doing it electronically, we'd love to hear about it. But we are confident that we have enough people in town to get this on the warrant. We were only, we're only here because of COVID.
Okay, actually, let me ask Jody first, because I assume, Jody, you just talked to Greg?
Yes, I did. So what Greg said is that, yes, the board can sponsor an article and then vote against it. However, the risk you take is you're basically allowing a private entity to, they, they're asking you to put this on the warrant, and that is opening you up for another private entity that would, could come to you and ask you to allow them to put something on the warrant. So, obviously, everything is a slippery slope and you just need to think about that. I don't know that you've done that in the past. I, I do understand the COVID. You could make a, a one-time exception, but that is the slippery slope, is you're not allowing a citizen to go out and get their signatures.
Okay, Scott?
I was thinking, so back with in town meeting, we, as a board, push petitions to fall town meeting without requiring new signatures because of COVID. So I guess the question to Greg would be, is that sufficient precedent to say we would allow this on the warrant without signatures because of COVID and not require us every year from now on to always let it happen? I'm not, I'm not the lawyer here, but if Greg thought it's appropriate.
That, that jives with the question that actually we just got, which is, asking whether the Commonwealth has exempted people for collecting signatures in this extraordinary time. Could we ask Greg? I don't think this is unprecedented. I guess, Jody, can, can you call Greg again?
Yes, I'm calling him right now, but I am not aware that signature gathering has been exempted at all, but let me ask him.
Either am I. I know that, you know, certainly with respect to, you know, signatures required to get people on the ballot. While they did expand the timeframe and they cut the number of people, the number of signatures that were required, it didn't do away with signatures completely. Tom?
I, I was wondering if we could, if we could consider, if we took this up at next meeting, we'd still have time to do it before we closed the warrant, right?
We closed the warrant at our next meeting.
Right, so the idea I had before we closed the warrant in the next meeting is, I think it would be questionable certainly for us to insist that people go out and do something that is not, you know, generally considered good practice right now in terms of getting together with people and collecting signatures. I'm wondering if, if we could say we're open to a one-time exemption because of the circumstance, and we would like this group to demonstrate evidence of 100 electronic supporters in town through some electronic means. Not that that takes the place of a signature, it doesn't. We would be sponsoring it using the, the right language here. But then I think we have a little bit of, of defense in the future, saying, look, exceptional circumstance, widespread demonstrated community interest in this. It made sense to us and it was appropriate for us to go ahead and put this on for community discussion.
Anita?
I had a different thought that I'm gonna take back, so.
Okay. Okay. I guess the, I mean, Tom, that seems somewhat reasonable to me, but I guess I also have to raise the issue. You know, I don't know if there is, there are other groups or there are other people out there who might want to have a, let's just call it a citizen's petition for now, for lack of, you know, better wording. But if we're going to allow it for this group, we're gonna need to allow it for anybody who wants to put any, you know, any such resolution petition or some, or, or article on our warrant. So, I, I do think we need to bear that in mind, that if, if we're gonna do this, it needs to be available to anybody who wants to do, who wants to do this, that we can't just limit it to Westford Climate Action Group. Hi, Jody? Unmute yourself.
I'm back. Okay, poor Greg. I'm sure he's ready to have dinner or something. But, so what he said is, yes, if you choose to not require people to get signatures for the, the warrant for the special town meeting due to COVID, that you could waive that, but then you are opening up the warrant to other groups asking you to put their articles on and waiving that requirement too. So, that's, that's the, that's the trouble here is, you know, you're opening it up to any other private group.
Right, and that's, that's what we, while you were on the phone, that's what we were saying. Scott?
Well, one variation on Tom's idea, you know, there's no limit on how many positions you could have, right? You could theoretically have 100 positions in circulation. So does anything prevent the sponsors from, they know who would support it, mail them the petition, they get it mailed back, no one's touching pens, no one's meeting, you got two done. That would seem to make everybody honest, if this, if that, if that works for them.
Yeah, or scanned, can they scan it in? No.
May I speak?
Hang on a minute. In terms of, of, of scanning, I mean, I, I think, I mean, given, given the times in COVID, I, I don't know if this is our decision or the town clerk's decision, but, you know, scanning these, scanning the petitions and incentive of just town clerk, I would think would be equivalent to actually handing in the originals. And just to follow up on what you were saying, Tom. I'm Scott. Jody?
So we do still have our shade tents outside of the town hall. And certainly somebody could sit out there, you know, with a.
And, um, certainly somebody could sit out there, you know, with a petition and have people come by and sign if they want to. Um, there's a lot of people voting. You can't be, I don't believe, within 150 feet of the, of the fire station, but there's a lot of people coming in to vote right now too. I mean, I, I definitely think if they want to get their signatures, there are safe ways to get it, but, um.
Okay, could I speak at this, could I speak at this point?
Sure, and then I know you're out there, John, I'll let you speak.
Okay.
Um, but go ahead, Beth.
Well, at this point, you know, I'm, I'm ready to thank you for your consideration. Um, gee, we knew there were two different ways to do this. We thought this would be the safer way with COVID. But I am confident that we can go out and get 100 signatures if we need to. And, um, we'll be back looking for your endorsement later. Um, and we'll hold all of our, uh, arguments and information for, for that discussion. But, um, thank you for your consideration. I think, I'm confident we can get the signatures for this.
Okay, and I think that takes care of that. But, um, John, I, I did say that you, um, that you could speak, so, so, uh, go ahead.
I think my only point was, I think any citizen can, uh, suggest or recommend a resolution at town meeting. I'm not sure it requires a warrant article. Uh, you could make a resolution, propose one at town meeting. And that should save everybody a lot of trouble.
That's certainly true, but, um, Beth, why don't you explain, um, the thinking?
Yeah. Because I, that climate change is, uh, and the climate crisis is one of the biggest challenges of our time. It involves, uh, or, or fighting the climate crisis and involves town government. It involves companies, people, involves a lot of education and persuasion. And I think having this resolution on the town warrant will make it clearer to everybody what we're going to discuss in advance. And I think it makes it more significant. Um, it's part of the overall educational effort, um, for this huge challenge that's in front of us. So that's, we wanted to have it on the warrant instead of hanging it up from the floor.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, so I think, um, I think, uh, at this point, um, they're, uh, they're going to go out and, um, get their 100 signatures, um, and, uh, get, uh, put it on the, uh, uh, special town meeting warrant, uh, via citizen's petition. And, um, they'll be back before us seeking our, uh, endorsement, uh, uh, when, uh, when we, uh, schedule our meetings to go through all of the various articles.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we are now at old and new business. Um, and, uh, the first one is, uh, consider establishing a select board proclamation policy. Um, I think Anita, you had asked, uh, the board to, uh, to think about that and consider this.
Yeah, just since we had the proclamation request at our last meeting or a couple of meetings ago, I just asked whether or not we had a policy and whether or not we should establish one, um, if we don't. I'm not sure how common it really is, but, um, I know Jody and her team have been poking around, looking for some examples.
Okay, um, what's the board's pleasure? Do we think we need guidelines and procedures for proclamation, for requests for proclamations? I know, and, I mean, we, we haven't, we don't have one, um, in place right now. We've certainly been asked for proclamations in the past, um, um, which, um, I can't remember one that we haven't approved, to be honest with you, but there might be one. But we have been asked for proclamation, you know, to approve proclamations in the past, so, um, just, you know, is it the pleasure of the board to actually formalize our policy or just continue to sort of, to do it on a, on an ad hoc basis is when we get these requests? Scott?
I mean, I keep it ad hoc, I mean, the idea of the flag and the town comment is, it's, you know, we're using public property to espouse or at least to allow a cause to get promoted. Um, proclamations is purely our, our will or not. So I don't think we need a policy that explains to future boards what their will has to be. Um, but future boards have their own will.
Other comments? Uh, Tom?
Yeah, I'd be inclined to agree. I think any, any prescriptions you give might sort of put guardrails when a future board may choose to endorse in a proclamation form or not. And, and, uh, I'm, I'm, I see the, see the avoidance of risk by having the flag policy. I'm not sure the, we have any real needed avoidance of risk by having a policy in this case.
I, I, I would agree too. I'm, I'm, I don't feel the need for a policy.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Jody.
You're welcome. Well, I learned something, so.
You know, if, if we start getting flooded with requests, we can come back and look at it. All right, um, next, we have a request to appoint election officers with terms to expire on July 31st, 2021. Um, is there a motion to approve the election officers as listed in our package tonight?
Removed.
There a second? All those in favor? Um, Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Aye. Uh, we have a request to approve 2020 annual reappointments for committee and board members as listed in the meeting packet. Is there a motion to approve?
Removed.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Um, we have a request to increase the town and school safety task force membership to add one resident at large position and appoint, um, Albert Prescott to this term to expire on June 30th, 2023. Um, is there a motion to approve?
Removed.
There a second? Um, all those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, um, now we are back, um, at our consent agenda, but, um, to discuss, uh, Witches Woods. Um, and I know that Doug DeShane, um, is, is out there, um, and would like to speak to this. So, um, uh, Eric, if you can unmute Doug and Doug unmute yourself.
Yes.
Doug, are you there?
Hello?
Hello?
Hello? Hello?
Hello, there you are, Doug.
Good evening. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Douglas DeShane, representing the Shova Valley Ski Area. Um, as we have typically done for many years now, we are seeking once again the permits to operate Witches Woods. However, as we all know, this is anything but a typical year. Um, given the current pandemic, um, this has been a very different and difficult process. Um, in addition to filing with the Board of Selectmen for the usual permit, uh, we have also been working with both the Board of Health as well as the state uh, to determine what all of of the pandemic means to, uh, the operation of this, uh, facility this year. Mr. Fletcher has been working with the Board of Health, who has then been working for, uh, with the Massachusetts Division of Local Services, DLS, uh, to determine whether the proposed, uh, operation is in fact allowed under the governor's, uh, regulations. Um, I'm happy to report, um, we have been provided information that in fact, um, operations such as Witches Woods are in fact allowed to operate, but will have to do so in accordance with very strict, uh, state conditions and, uh, those of the local Board of Health. So as I said, we, we have been working with the Board of Health. Uh, we have gotten approval from DLS to move forward under certain conditions. We have provided a, uh, SOP standard operating procedure, which we believe meets those state guidelines to the Board of Health, uh, for review uh, and verification that in fact they agree, uh, that we're meeting all of the requirements. Uh, in order to do so, we've had to make some significant changes, uh, to the proposed operation. And just to give you some very quick highlights, um, in a typical year, um, Witches Woods can see between 3,000 and 4,000 people, uh, on a good night. Uh, and we have experienced that pretty steadily for the last, uh, I don't know how many years it's been now, 10 or 12 years. Um, in fact, last year, our lowest single night total was 1,800 visitors. Uh, for this year, we are proposing to limit, um, the attractions to 1,200, uh, visitors per night. So significant reduction from what we're used to seeing. Uh, additionally, those 1,200 tickets will be by reservation only. So you will have to actually log on and reserve your tickets for a particular night. And, uh, only 1,200 reservations will be accepted. And, uh, those 1,200 people will be allowed to come through. Um, we've eliminated indoor attractions. Everything will be outside. Um, we are required to apply social distancing requirements to all of our activities. So for instance, the hay wagon will likely have, uh, slotted areas for two or three people and then there'll be shields, you know, some kind of plexiglass or other shields between the, the folks on the wagon. So we're, we're trying to, uh, again, meet all of those requirements. There'll be social distancing required in terms of queuing in lines and in moving between the operations. So it will be different, but we certainly hope to provide something that will be very enjoyable, uh, to the folks that decide to come out. Um, I've recently been, in addition to working with the Board of Health, I've recently been informed that the police chief, um, has some questions and concerns regarding the proposal or the request for licenses. Um, Mr. Fletcher has a meeting scheduled for tomorrow morning with the Chief of Police, uh, to go over his concerns. Uh, we're not aware that he knows yet, uh, what we're doing in terms of cutting back the operation, the reservations, the limit, limited number of people. So we're hoping that, um, that information will, uh, resolve any questions that he might have. So Al will be meeting with the chief tomorrow. Unfortunately, your meeting is tonight and, uh, we, as you might expect, are running under a significant time crunch. Uh, we generally, uh, seek our permits in August, usually beginning to middle of the month. Um, so we're a little behind the eight ball there. But, um, we need that time to set things up, to have it inspected and to get our final O case to operate. This year, um, it's going to take even more preparation and, and construction and work in getting this thing ready. So we really need to know, um, that we can continue to move forward. So I'm asking the board to consider granting the requested licenses. Uh, they are standard, you know, with respect to the days and the hours and the things as they have been, uh, in, in all of the previous years. However, I recognize the fact that the board is, would probably want to know that, um, the police chief is, is comfortable and also that we have satisfied all the requirements of the Board of Health. So what I ask you to do is consider granting the, uh, the licenses so that we don't lose any time, but to grant them subject to review and approval, if you will, or whatever, uh, language is best. Um, review and approval by the police chief as well as the Board of Health. I, I'm unaware of whether or not the Board of Health has submitted anything to you or if they're even here tonight to speak. Um, we hadn't asked them to do so, um, which is probably in hindsight, not the best thing, given that we've been working so closely with them now for a while. But, um, as you can, uh, understand, um, the ski area is a westward business that is struggling to survive like everyone else. Um, the, Witches Woods in, income revenue is, is critical. Uh, even at a reduced rate, i- it, it could very well make the difference between, uh, surviving for another year. Uh, and, and as you also know, um, they do employ a number of local, uh, folks uh, during the, the Witches Woods, uh, season. And, uh, uh, you know, I think a lot of people could use those jobs and we're hoping to be able to offer them. So I'd ask your consideration in granting the permits, uh, subject to whatever requirements that you may see fit from the Police Department and the Board of Health.
Thank you, Doug. Um, Jody?
Uh, sorry, um, I just, I think that the email that I got from Mark Chambers today was that they have some serious concerns with the request. So I, I don't know that it was just they hadn't, um, been able to give you their approval yet. So I don't know what their serious concerns are. So I'm just a little concerned with the board, uh, granting that without knowing what their serious concerns are. So I told them it would be, uh, delayed until nine, eight, uh, because I know this doesn't start until October. So.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, so, um, I completely agree with that. Um, 1,200 people in a seven-hour period is 170 people an hour, even in an outdoor environment. Many of whom are children who are not allowing to go to school, or at least not in a full classroom. And so, um, I am struggling without listening to the Board of Health and to public safety and understanding what the state has and has not agreed to, how this is possible. The last thing I want to do is to impede business any further. Uh, I'm the last person who would want to do that. But I find it ironic that we're, we might allow this to happen when we have so many other things in town that we're not allowing to happen. So, um, I need to hear more, um, and before I would be in, in favor of, of voting one way or another.
Tom?
I, I completely agree. I would need to hear that our health department and, and first responders were comfortable with the situation. We're nowhere close to that tonight, so I would suggest we delay this till the next meeting.
Um, Scott? You're muted. Scott, you're muted. Can't hear you.
Sorry, but as I recall, the governor's guidelines are still a limit of 100 people outdoors at a gathering. So I'm kind of curious how we get to 170, um, for this. I, I'm with Mark and Tom. I think I need, I need to hear more from, from, from Jeff as to, you know, where he's thinking before I say yes.
Jody?
I was on a conference call with the Lieutenant Governor today. It's actually 50. Um, so I did just hear from Jeff. They do have a lot of questions on how they would handle this and handle crowds. So I really think it's better if, if the board waits till, uh, September 8th so we see if, if there is even a way to handle, to run this. And, um, I appreciate your patience, Doug.
I appreciate your consideration.
Yeah, um, I, you know, I, I, when I first heard about this, I, I was already raising questions with Jody about how this was going to be done. I certainly, you know, if it can be done safely, you know, for all, you know, for some of the reasons that you said, you know, Doug, in terms of it being a local business, you know, um, providing jobs for, you know, some of our, our folks here. Um, you know, helping, you know, our local business out in, in what's, you know, a time of, you know, serious economic difficulties. I really want to be able to do that, but I also really need to feel like we're keeping people safe. Um, and I'm sure that your client wants to be, you know, assured or comfortable that, you know, uh, he's keeping people safe as well, um, in, in running this. So, um, while I, I hear you about, uh, a time crunch, um, you know, if we act upon this on September 8th, which is our next meeting, um, while I know it probably will put some, you know, even a bigger time crunch on, on your folks if we, if the approval is granted, is it still something that you can live with?
Well, we'll have to. We'll make it work.
Um, okay, so, um, I think what I would ask though, um, from all of us and also from, uh, Jeff and our Chief of Police, um, is that, um, we get from and our Chief of Police, um, is that um we get from them as soon as possible, you know, sort of what their concerns are, what their questions are, that they get them to, you know, that they get them to Doug as soon as possible so that, you know, there can be that conversation. They can have, you know, they can answer questions. We get them. If we have questions, we can send them back to Jeff uh and or the chief um or Doug so that when we get to our meeting on September 8th, it basically the majority of our questions, if not all of them, have been answered so that we can be prepared to act on this on the 8th. Um, so I would ask that of the board and also of our staff.
We'll do everything we can to to make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again for your time and I'll see you on the 8th.
See you on the 8th. All right, um, so we have uh, we we went through the town manager's report. So uh we are now at a correspondence. Is there a motion to waive reading the correspondence?
Submoved.
There's a second?
Okay.
Second. All those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Hi. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Submoved.
So a second?
Second.
We can just do this by raising our hands, all in favor of adjournment. Okay, and we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Westford. Good night. Everybody stay safe.
Thank you for your patience.
Bye.